I'll call the meeting to order. It's 7:00 PM on July 26th. We do have a forum. A bit small crowd, but we do have a forum. We'll move forward with the meeting. First item on the agenda is adjustment to the agenda. Any adjustments? Hearing none, I'd like to welcome all of you. And we'll go through some introductions. I'm Kirk Waite from Georgia.
Barclay Morris from Grand Isle.
David Leslie from Grand Isle.
Neil Spears from Philly.
Hi, Oregon Sheldon.
Sylvia Johnson, Isle of Monte.
Sean Coleman and staff.
Rowena Brown, Richford.
Yvonne Danderant, Franklin.
Terry Pedro, Albert.
Joe Farnum from South Hero.
Dustin Tanner from Fairfield.
Albo Jel from St. Louis, Texas.
Lauren Rupel, Fletcher.
And Nicholas Fletcher.
Bill Irwin, Dickersfield.
Randy Devine, Fairfax.
Cameron Roy, South Hero.
Catherine Dimitri, Sett.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for public comment. Anyone who would like to make public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to minutes of the June 20... 2017 meeting.
Will it be accepted?
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Commission reports. There are written reports enclosed, but we'll go through each organization for comment or questions. First is finance and operations. Harold isn't here, but Catherine's available.
Yes. So, all of you should have gotten a revised budget report. If you noticed your... the budget report in your pocket, at the time that that was printed, that was accurate, that showed a loss for the fiscal year of $137,000. That was compiled and presented prior to completion of the majority of the year-end invoices for our grants and contracts. So, I have most of those have been done now. We still have a couple of small stragglers still to go, but those have mostly been done now and entered into our accounting system. And so, I brought for you tonight a revised budget report and balance sheet that shows a better reflection of where we actually are year-end. It looks like we'll be in the range that I discussed at the last board meeting, somewhere in the $30,000 to $50,000 deficit by the end of the fiscal year that we anticipated back in January when we were looking at our mid-year budget. So, that's where I think we'll end with the audit, is somewhere in that range. And I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that folks have.
Can you refresh my memory of what's causing the budget to be... the shortfall?
The majority of the reason why we have a budget shortfall is related to our budget surplus last year. We... because of our high indirect rate, we build some of our contracts earlier than anticipated and burned through earlier. And so, that causes to have a surplus last fiscal year.
Okay.
But then led those funds to be unavailable in FY '17. So, that led to the deficit.
And so, did the funds carry over from one fiscal year to the other?
They do... some of them do carry over these particular contracts, but we actually ran out of money in the contract. And we spent them at... we spent them at a faster rate. So, we expended the dollars in FY '16 rather than FY '17.
So, I think we have money... a rainy day fund, correct?
We do. We actually... our audited surplus last year was about $130,000. So, we will... we will carry that through to cover any anticipated loss.
All right. So, we're not to worry that you need a line of credit for this?
No, we definitely don't need a line of credit, but I always worry. But we didn't... but we don't need a line of credit. We have enough cash flow and reserves.
Okay.
To cover the anticipated.
Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome.
Any others? Hearing none, we'll move on to personnel. Executive Committee. Bob's not here. I have no report. Policy Project Review, Bill. So, we had no applications that we did not need. Transportation Advisory Committee, David.
I think the notes are self-explanatory.
Any questions?
I haven't gotten that page yet.
Hearing none, Energy. Bob's not here to report. Ground Fields Committee, Laz isn't here. Anything we should be reporting there, Catherine?
Well, there is a summary of the status of all the sites that we're reviewing right now. And I don't know, Neil, if you could just mention the Swanton update, that would be great. The meeting that was held in...
Yes. Last Thursday, Greta held the final meeting for the Northern Gateway, the Swanton project, which included multiple ground fields sites. And it was Fairweather Consulting that ran the show for the several months that we had. We had our final informational meeting, and all but one of the landowners showed up, which was the first time that they had shown up since the project started. We've been in contact with a lot of them, but they seem to be interested in going further with it. So, I think Greta should be commended for her stick-toothedness, and the results, I think, are ongoing... improvements are ongoing.
Vermont Association of Planning and Development Agencies, Dustin.
There's nothing that I have to report. There was something in the notes, if you want to talk about that.
Just that directors had their... our annual retreat we do every year to talk about strategic priorities for the regional commissions statewide, and budget issues, and financing, and personnel management. It was a good... good two-day meeting.
Regional Plan Committee.
Looks like the staff submitted it. I don't know if anything's... must take a long time to come back.
Right. The... I will say it hasn't been finalized yet, but we have a tentative date for the hearing that the Department of Public Service has to hold to make their decision about whether to give our plan the determination of energy compliance. And that tentative date is August 31st. Once it's been finalized, I'll make sure all of you get notice of that, so you all are aware and can go. Tentatively, it will be the evening of August 31st at St. Alden City Hall.
So, would you like members of the board to show up?
If you are interested and available, I think it...
Totally helpful.
I don't know. I haven't gotten any initial feedback yet from the Department of Public Service, one way or the other, about their views on our plan and its amendment.
What is the 31st date?
31st, probably at 7:00. Once it's confirmed, I'll send you all the information to everybody.
Thank you.
Have there been other plans that have gone to the board already?
Bennington Regional Plan was approved, and then New Haven or Fairhaven was not.
But there are... yeah, there were lacking a lot of the elements.
Right.
And Fairhaven.
Vermont Economic Progress Council.
Did not make this vote.
And the Downtown Development Review.
We did approve North Hero, North application for Reno without comment.
GMT Catherine.
I actually was on vacation at the last board meeting, which was last week. But I will report that I was elected treasurer, so I will be... even in absence, I was elected treasurer.
That'll treat you for this meeting.
So, I will be treasurer for the coming year with the... with two goals. One, to be a good treasurer, and two, to immediately train by replacements. The next generation study is ongoing, and we wish to have more information about that.
And you update two things. One, the move to the gas, the electric buses. And then, secondly, there's an announcement in the paper that somebody is going to try to install rail service between St. Albans and Brelandon. So, one, what's the probability of that? Two, if it did occur, how would that affect the lake service?
I have no idea what the probability is, and my sense is that there is probably enough demand to serve both. Just my intuition on it.
And the electric buses are okay going up the hill?
They actually were. There were, you know, some... there were some issues with the electric buses, but overall, they performed better than anticipated. And so, the bid for future buses will include an option for electric.
Just in case people hadn't heard the news, tonight, Great Britain and also the European Union separately approved that no... everything has to be electric after 2040, that they will not accept diesel or gas-powered
Clean Water Advisory Committee Staff.
So, the Clean Water Advisory Committee did meet and reviewed some prioritization processes for water quality projects. Additionally, I will report that the Regional Planning Commission received a $1.5 million allocation from the Agency of Natural Resources for project implementation. And this will be used for projects that are ready to go, have project sponsor, will require a 20% match. But if you are able to sponsor the project through your Regional Planning Commission, you can skip the grant application process. So, that... the details of how that's all going to work and how projects will be selected is being worked out. And I'll let everybody in our communities know as soon as we know how that will work. But we can certainly pick up a handful of projects, just discussing it at staff level, that might be really great for this program.
Do you know if that one committee's going to need to move in?
They are not. Taken in my mind.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What... I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask. There was a... we discussed at the last meeting, a letter of intent that towns were supposed to submit. Is this falling in the same committee?
Yeah, we can talk about the grants in the new pilot project.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, either here or staff, it would've come... staff report would've come up, so either way.
Whatever you want.
It's fine. So, the letters of intent, we received letters of intent from all but two communities in our region. So, every municipality in our region except for Isle of Monte and Easberg, both for valid local reasons...
Easberg Falls.
Easberg Falls, both for valid local reasons, I have to say, not to participate. The remainder of their town... of our towns will be getting grants anywhere from $5,000 to $20-something thousand to implement best management practices on roadway segments to bring them up to compliance with the new municipal roads general permit. And we're scheduling site visits with towns now and getting that process rolling, so towns can get to work as soon as they are ready. Statewide, 186 municipalities participated, which I thought was a really great number. And Department of Environmental Conservation is really thrilled with the participation level, and we're excited to see how it actually rolls out on the ground.
Yeah, it sounded like at a meeting with the DBC Commissioner a couple weeks ago about up in Franklin, they carmine. It sounded like that program will be level funded for next year as well. And they're kind of looking at the possibility of incorporating private roads, but that wasn't a guarantee. It was a way that they could include them in maybe a competitive process, but there was no guarantee.
Private roads, is it a big possibility? Well, at our level, in the descent, they're a little...
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Could we, at some time in the future, at least have a discussion about that, so we would understand more about how that helps our towns through those issues?
Yes. If it appears as though there's some movement to include private roads, either as part of the permit or in a potential grant funding situation, definitely.
Other items you wanted to raise in staff report, Catherine? Or someone else from staff?
Well, Catherine stole my thunder, so...
Sorry.
That's okay. So, we did meet with... South Hero is done. Easberg Town is, I think, this week. St. Albans Town has been done. We had the preliminary meeting, and there was another town, I can't remember. It seems to me which the other town was. Not Fairfax. I'm looking at Randy, but I thought it wasn't that. Catherine, definitely had it instead of meeting with another town, I can't remember. So, our goal is to try to get all those in by September 1st? 30, I think? 30? So, that's pretty much been our focus.
Additionally, I'll make sure folks notice that the municipal planning grant applications have been released. And so, if your community is interested in applying for a municipal planning grant and would like some help with that, just let us know at the office. And our staff will be reaching out to all the municipal folks anyway, just to check in. But if you don't remember the project, definitely be attentive.
The other item I had was, we were the staff was... MRPC staff was activated during the July 1st thunderstorms that went through. The state, mostly the southern end of the state, got hit. Vermont Emergency Management called us up and asked us to outreach to all the communities to find out what the damages were. We were pretty much fair enough here, southern Vermont. I think there were four counties in the south that got hammered. I think the farthest north was Addison County. There is going to be a declaration that's going to be put... signed by the governor, I believe, this week for that declaration. So, those communities that were affected by that disaster... this is my plug for the LEOPs and the local emergency plans and the hazard mitigation plans that we've been working on constantly. Those communities that have both a local emergency operations plan and a hazard mitigation plan will get... they will get a reduced match for the damages that they incurred from the disaster. So, whatever the damages were, if that $100,000 worth of damage, damages, they'll have to come up with a 20% match on the $100,000. So, those communities that have LEOPs and a hazard mitigation plan will only have to come up with 12.5% match. And the state will come up with the other 12.5% match. And if they go on to enact that or adopt a river corridor bylaw as part of their zoning bylaws, then that reduces the match down to 7.75%. So, that's my plug. And we're in pretty good state... we're in pretty good standing in Franklin and Grand Isle. We have all but two communities that have local emergency operations plans. Most of the communities were in some form or another developing a hazard mitigation plan. We just went under contract with Vermont Emergency Management to capture those remaining communities that don't have hazard mitigation plans. So, we're in pretty good standing for that money. And we heard that there's another surge of grant funding that's coming in that's tied into the hazard mitigation plans. That'll be for infrastructure projects for all the communities they'll be getting soon. We should be hearing more about that in the near future.
Could I just interject?
Absolutely. Yep.
I attended last week the International Joint Commission meeting on air flood study.
Yep.
And they're looking for information on how we're going to handle these things and to come up with some sort of international policy. So, just so that you're aware, if I get any communications, I'll send them to you.
Yeah.
But I sent a letter to Catherine, my response to them.
Yeah, I heard about the meeting today at another meeting. Somebody mentioned that that meeting was held, but I would've gone if I had known about it, but I didn't make my way.
It was really interesting, because they spent $7.5 million over the last five years designing the engineering study that they were going to proceed with for another $7.5 million to figure out what to do. Interesting, out of that discussion came that whatever they do in for the lake is antithetical to what the regional river or valley needs. And what the valley needs is antithetical to what we need. So, the engineers have a real difficult problem of how to figure out to manage that extra water, so that both communities are least impacted.
Right.
By that scenario. They're looking for municipal input over the long run. They have a special group that's going to help look for those people.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we can participate in that.
We'll get some representation.
The other thing I suggested, mainly because of my work on the Vermont Council of Road Affairs, I think we should try to have inter... what I call municipal cities, but where in town, like St. Albans Town, would have a city municipality in Quebec, that are both affected by high water, so that we can share each other, understand better each other's problems on a very personal level, and then use that as a means to help the international community figure out what they want to do
Thank you. Other items?
The final item that I have is the FY '18 committee assignments. There was... in your packet was actually a printout of where committee assignments were for FY '17. What I'm going to pass around is a list of potential assignments for FY '18. So, please take a look at it. If your name's not on a committee and you want to be on a committee, just write your name on there. If you are on it and you don't want to be on it, just cross your name out. And we'll pass it around. And if you're not sure what the committees do, there's a description of them that's attached to it as well.
Thank you, Catherine. Next item on our agenda is the procurement policy that is in your packet. Our goal tonight is to take action on the procurement policy. A motion to approve would be appropriate.
I have, before you speak, I have one correction I need to note, if that's all right?
Certainly.
Okay. So, the eagle eye of our vice chair caught a conflict that I failed to correct. So, if you turn to page 5. I think there's five instances where the dollar value $100,000 is listed. That actually should be $150,000, because that is the new threshold that I corrected earlier in the document and failed to correct later in the document.
So, a motion with that... with that modification?
I moved adoption of the policy, the procedures with the modification of $100,000 to reflect $150,000 where it's due to...
Thank you. And I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is the... Transportation Planning Initiative, another item we would like to have action on. You will see in your packet that there was an overview of the work program and budget enclosed. They accept the... motion to accept and approve. So, move? A motion of second discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Sorry about that, because I... so, I noticed in the report on the committee reports... I'm just trying to find the transportation one. It spoke about the Grand Isles County scoping study for the park and ride. Is this the appropriate place to discuss it? Is it in here, or do I need to bring that back up under other business?
It's in here as a strikeout item, so it is in here.
Yeah. So, what's the scoop?
So, it should be wrapped up in the next month.
Okay.
And that's the proof I know.
At the location they have it now? Does that forgive me?
No, the... there was a study that the Agency of Transportation asked us to do to look at alternative locations and additional locations for park and ride lots in Grand Isle County. And there was a public meeting last week or the week before, and there'll be a report with recommendations that will come out in the next month.
Okay. All right. So, to be continued.
There are... if I can...
Yes.
There are several sites. I think it's five that are on the top of their list. Number one is just east of South Hero Village, where... what is it? Island Motorsports?
Yep. Island Racing.
Island Racing is... there's another one near the fishing access in South Hero. It would kind of use the same road access, but it would be just to the west of that. And the other ones actually are in Colchester, closer to exit 17, but they would still serve theoretically violent communities.
So, there's nothing in the northern part?
In the what?
In the northern part? Like Albert?
Not covered in the study.
This... they originally looked at it, and it just did not seem to be the need for a state-sized park and ride. Possibility of a town park and ride, like the one that South Hero has put in, in that area.
Where the old skate runs.
But the state park and rides are usually considerably larger.
Right.
And serve a greater number of vehicles. And they're, for a number of reasons, anything north had a very low score compared to the southern ones.
Based on traffic? Based on... what is the criteria?
I don't remember what all of the criteria that they had on it. They have about a dozen criteria.
Trudell ran the study.
Trudell?
Trudell Engineering did it.
Okay. Oh, gosh, I work great with him.
Bethany should have a copy of that.
Yeah, we can be sure.
Would you appreciate that?
Any other questions in regards to the motion or comments?
Just a general comment on these studies like this park and ride. We are using "we" in a broader sense. We're not getting out to local communities to really get it, just like your comments on what happened over.
I mean, 78 is so busy.
Well, Trudell eliminated it with their score, but you... you know, nobody bothered to tell you.
That's okay. Well, I'll look forward to receiving the information, and it sounds like there's more opportunities.
The only... the only public hearing they held, actually, was in South Hero.
Correct. I do remember that. Yeah.
Who hired Trudell?
Other comments?
Thanks.
Questions? Yes?
One of the long-term... two personal links that sort of get taken care of one way or another. One was the Kerry Bay causeway, for as far as money was concerned, for trying to intrude with Cisco Bay. And it's determined that the causeways don't belong to anybody but fishing wildlife. And nobody... sorry, I know nobody has docked fishing wildlife above those causeways in a decade. So, I'm planning to try to pry that open a little bit and find out if this was going And the other one is on exit 17, the... which is on page 5. I'd ask. I have some personal feelings on all of that, and I think that we are now getting close to the point where we can get proper input from the individual town people. And we don't get in that situation, so do you like what you're discussing about? Right?
Yeah.
I think that one of the best things we have going for is there is that now that Dr. Johnson's name for South Hero is now the leader of AOT.
Joe Flynn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think we'll have more opportunity to have personal input. Hope my grin didn't show up too much on this. I'm very frustrated with the lack of input on all of these things.
Any others? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is the Lake Champlain Byway Plan. This is an action item, but what we're really looking for action on is to acknowledge that we... to acknowledge the order management plan and that we received the plan. It's not necessary for us to approve of the plan. We can, if someone wants to make a motion to that effect, but that's not necessary. We can, if someone wants to make a motion to that effect, but that's not necessary.
Do you have any questions first?
Sure.
How do I not feel about this plan?
Sorry?
How do you feel about this plan? Is it proposed? Anyone favor of it?
Yeah, I'm theoretically a member of that group. I was involved in pretty detail in the earlier days, along with, you were, one of the members in this, the lady that was running the Chamber of Commerce back then, yeah, generally.
Ruth Walmsley?
Ruth.
Ruth.
Yeah.
So the.
Ruth Walmsley.
This particular byway plan is a little strange. As Dave mentioned, the scenic byway program used to be big and used to be very active, and there was a very active committee, and there was national funding, and it was a real program promoted by tourism officials and transportation officials. The program is now completely canceled at the federal level and not in existence at the state level either, but we had one final requirement under the program, which was to complete an update through the corridor management plan, and that's what this particular plan is, but it's kind of like, here's what we did, and there's no real plans on the byway program next because there is no more byway program. But that doesn't mean that these ideas can't carry forward and others.
Anyway, you didn't help bring out in the tourist industry to have this in place, that is important, even though it's not funded and it's not a big deal, but the mere fact that we're committed to it in some level, does that help tourism?
I think any sort of concerted effort can help tourism, and the chamber director, Jay Marinelli in the islands, has looked at the draft that he's some early in the year.
So she would be in favor of this? Accepting it or approving it?
Oh, I can't speak, I don't know, I didn't ask that question.
So the two members who read the title wanted approved?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll, accepting or approving? I know that we will, accepting or approving this document, that is.
Second? Yes. Motion and a second. Catherine, any concerns with accepting rather than acknowledging and receiving?
None on my end.
You just say, having previous experience, I realize it was normal, but a lot of effort was done, particularly myself there in Colchester, as a meeting was developed, and as a meeting in Colchester, and so I just hate to say, it would degrade that commitment that there was two of these had early on.
And the Chittenden Regional Planning Commission did go to adopt their corridor management plan final update.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving right along. Commissioner Announcements, anything anyone would like to raise during Commissioner Announcements? Hearing None, I take a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Please do take the time before you leave, though, a record, huh?